... pledge allegiance, excuse me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The motion is clear on the meeting. So, I'll second, second, or meeting on this.
Would you go get printouts by the copy machine?
Back door is the, usually the open.
In Kelly's office, it's open. Might be on the counter there, fresh fruit and vegetables.
Here.
So, here. Justin's gonna be here in a few minutes and Melissa's excuse California. Number six, this is the agenda. We're gonna cut out the number eight, right now.
Yep, we have all the students not available tonight that we anticipated for number eight. So, we'll just table that or skip it. Just won't have it tonight. And yes, I did send you the, the agenda which, which had seventeen from your preview for your draft which you got on Thursday.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda as stated minus number eight. Celebration excellence.
I'll second that. Okay, the second through agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. Move into the consent agenda.
Starting with minutes, we have quite a few meetings.
Or, uh, meeting for the minutes.
The only thing I seen is it said that I answered yes to a roll call last Monday I was on here.
What date was that?
Melissa, Melissa, Janice were not here on.
Oh, I wasn't, sorry, was it you and?
That, that was recording secretary's error.
That was the Dr. Arnold.
So, who was, who was not here?
I tried to.
You and who?
Me and Melissa.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the special room.
That was the only thing I saw too.
Thank you.
I, sometimes I do that on purpose just to see if you're reading the minutes.
Can I get up a little bit? There was a couple misspelling that I'm not gonna pick on.
On me?
I don't know. I'm not sure what I would read too.
Wow.
Again.
And I got my education here too, so.
Those, the minutes all look okay, other than that, yeah. Do you even want a financial report? Just got to the financials.
So, I've mentioned to you, uh, change at the Department of Ed. They, they sent out, uh, some of our September receipts early last April, right? And that was, uh, so that, that really inflated our beginning balance, uh, for budgeting procedures. So, we were a little bit concerned about what are, uh, receipts gonna look like in September? Well, they were healthier than, uh, than Kelly and I anticipated. So, I mean, that's on, uh, about your third page in, uh, building fund of twenty, almost twenty-seven thousand. And, uh, general fund is seven oh one. So, I mean, I, I was anticipating or planning on maybe a half million for building fund, but it was seven hundred thousand. So, uh, so our receipts were better than anticipated. Uh, so we're, we're good through the fall for gen- what, we're in great shape through the fall for general fund. So, if we need to borrow, if we need to enter fund loan from general fund to building fund to pay our Lincoln Avenue bill, which will be coming, uh, we're in, we're in good shape to do that. Our, uh, interest rate on our, one of our CDs that matured end of August went down like three, like two and a half percentage points. So, that, that's just a, a kind of a non-negotiable. So, when the, when the maturity comes, they say, here's your interest, uh, maturity, give us a new maturity date and here's a new interest rate. So, your, uh, the hundred thousand, the first, one of the hundred thousands of Brunswick State Bank that matured on, on August thirty, did go down quite a lot.
How much did it go down, did you say?
Well, I'd have to look on last one. It was over four percent last year. It's one nine four this year.
So, the maturity was the, uh, August thirtieth, the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, that's, that was.
That's new maturity.
Yeah.
On to the claims, yeah?
Better annual nursing contract in the claims, uh, this month. So, that inflated claims a little bit, even though we didn't have all of our ESU spent bill. So, I guess that worked out okay.
Bana, is that for the field, new field?
Yeah, Gail, uh, no, that was for the football field. Gail saw some spots on the football field he didn't like, uh, I thought, uh, due to whether it was, um, bugs or.
Fungus.
Yes, something, so he came ahead and put some, another application of something on it. Just, you know, in anticipation and needing it to look good for another month. Coach Schmidt. Coach Schmidt. So, that's an application we normally don't have.
I didn't know if that was new practice.
No.
That'd be a separate.
Correct.
Anything else on the claims, questions? Now, I will. The motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept consent, consent agenda as presented.
I will second that. I move the second to accept consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no. Motion carried. Number eight, celebration excellence, we push back. Uh, number nine, public comment. Is there anybody who wants to speak tonight? Okay, same agenda. We'll move ahead on to discussion items starting from ten. Ovea's here with some information about.
Um, I have a little bit of papers if you guys are interested in reading a little bit more about the Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Program. This, this gives you a little bit better idea. Do you want to take one of those? As some of you may have heard, we received the Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Program grant. I applied for it last year and we received that this year. With this program, we're able to provide a healthy snack for our students two days a week. Uh, we do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the afternoon. Uh, this is just for elementary students, but it does also include our pre-K students. So, we do do our morning preschool as well as our afternoon preschool. Students will learn about nutrition through our morning message and, um, they participate in like surveys and stuff about the snacks they try. We do plan to source our fruit and vegetables from approved vendors, but we are also growing connections with local farmers and our school greenhouse. This turns snack into hands-on opportunities for our students to learn, um, about the food. Chad and I have already talked about some things that he started. He has started sugar snap peas, cherry tomatoes and celery to start us off this year. And then he's working on other greenhouse, um, vegetables for us to try. I'm really excited for this opportunity for our kids. I think there's been a really growing buzz about it. I know Mrs. Hudson can say that they're always asking, what's our next snack? What are we gonna have? So, it's been, um, we, last week was our first week of it, but I think it went really well and I think the students really enjoyed it. So, um, do you guys have any questions for me? Gladly answer some of them either.
It's kind of a, and I could, I, I certainly commend Ovea for, you know, the USDA, cause it's USDA, is that right?
Correct.
Oftentimes you stay the heck away. We get grant opportunities quite frequently, but you gotta be careful because, okay, very good, now, now they're in, you know, our school and now we want you to do this, this and this and stop doing that and that. But this was kind, kind of a no-brainer, even though USDA makes you a little nervous. But it's a bit of a novelty, you know, for the kids in the afternoon, a cart to come down. Do, do we take a cart down the hallway?
Um, actually, they kind of go and grab whenever it's their type of snack.
Yeah, it's kind of a novelty. So, at two o'clock or whatever, when they're doing sustain silent reading or this small group work or that, oh, we get a bag of apples now or carrots or, God forbid, celery or something? Just the fact that we get a fresh fruit or vegetable snack in the afternoon, they go crazy for it. I mean, check out this character right up here. Look at this kid. I mean, I mean, he, you ask him to eat an apple at home, they might turn their nose up because they want Cheetos instead. But, uh, so that, and that's part of the whole idea of this is education and.
To promote the.
And promote, and, and maybe a kid will say celery's not so bad, you know, or I don't need a gaba ranch for my carrot or whatever the case may be. So, uh, what, what have we purchased also?
Um, this week, we're gonna do strawberries and oranges.
But did we, do we have to purchase any materials?
Oh, we did purchase some materials. Um, I believe Kelly and, we've talked about those in that first grant. We got boats and some utensils and stuff like that just to use.
So, you can get some simple things to help you with implementing the grant, whether it's a cart, because you maybe you're gonna push it to classrooms or something like that. But, uh, it, I, I love to hear that she's working with Mr. Clement. We got a greenhouse a hundred feet away. You know, let's grow our own, uh, fresh, uh, fruits, more likely vegetables, you know, for the kids to snack on and so.
He did, he did say, you know, first would be a little harder. He was gonna work on maybe sustaining some like, um, strawberries or one he said he, we can plant, but it's gonna take at least a year before we can see the revenue from that. So, um, that was just kind of what we've chatted about and if, um, you have ideas, gladly, would.
Have they already provided some of that from the greenhouse already or less?
No, he just planted those as soon as he found out we had received the grant. So, that way, um, and he said with the greenhouse, it's a shorter growing season, so it should be a quicker greenhouse to table experience. And he said we might not have like a full to do, we have two hundred kids in the elementary, so we might not have enough to do all of them at once for something that's come out of the greenhouse. So, one week, you know, pre-K through second grade would have sugar snap peas and then the next week, our three through six would have them, just to kind of break it up so they can, we can serve it as fresh as it is available.
So, is the majority of the expense from the grant just going towards purchasing the?
Just, yes.
Getting it from vendors?
Yes.
Seed or whatever?
Yep.
And you could, we can do farmer's market. Uh, we can do farm, uh, you know, somebody.
Will we take some donations for of stuff?
Yes, yes.
Payers?
We have items available. We would definitely, um, and those can, um, we can, I know we can pay back through the program, through the grant. We can pay our local farmers for those items or like, if you're selling them at a farmer's market, we can buy those. But, I mean, if it's a grant we are, or a given as a gift, we are more than welcome to use them. So, and there's no stipulation on like how much we serve. They just said as long as it's within the realm of what we think the students would eat in that amount of time.
Okay, I think that's great. We've got a, we'll get a little more serious about our watermelon patch next year.
Yes, and that, and that's kind of the buzz. I would love to start a buzz about, you know, with, you know, people, oh, my garden is overflowing with watermelons or melon or whatever and they wanna just bring it back.
Teachers would love to have every kid with watermelon in there.
I'm sure, but, but I do.
Watermelon juice everywhere.
Yeah, I do, it was fun to walk in. I walked into the fifth grade room, uh, when they had apples and they were eating an apple and doing small groups and I, it was just, it was fun to see them just en- enjoying a snack while still learning, so.
Okay, great.
Good.
That's all for here.
Yeah, if you have more questions, please reach out, so. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
Okay, number eleven is, uh, share out on the facility committee meeting the other night. Around this, you know, brief overview, I guess we had everybody get together, looked at four plans that they had put together and we got all guy in groups, board members and the community. Got together and kind of listed out the pros and cons of each proposal, I guess, and then everybody presented that on the wall. That kind of gave Bob an idea of what everybody's kind of thinking of. Kind of brought some things to light that, you know, was maybe, that we kind of realized, well, maybe this doesn't make sense. And I guess it kind of gave us some clarification anyway, so. If you guys wanna expound on any of that, go, go right ahead, but.
Good, good discussion. I mean.
Yeah.
I went in with some ideas and I came away with others and, you know, we saw a lot of common themes through the groups, like the, the van shed. You know, maybe a better understanding of what that actually meant by leaving it and then what that, the problems that may cause it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause when we, in the survey, it might even said it, but I don't think anybody had a plan in front of them. And then, and they look at the plan and they're like, well, if that shed wasn't there, this would be way better, you know? So, that was a pretty common theme, I think, the pottery needing to be, uh, wherever art's at was pretty common. What else was there?
Light, or light the classroom.
Light the classroom.
Became natural light.
Somehow having natural light.
Became more of a drive-in force on what you, what you have in classrooms.
Yeah. No, there's a lot of good ideas and I, uh, I had shared some with the committee on some, just that kind of stimulated more conversations after the fact and.
So, I think, I think one thing that started to see a little clarity on is maybe this needs to be, the preference is making it to a better school first and maybe not so much a community-based.
Oh, yeah, right. The day, the daycare.
Public access to a fitness center, for example, that's kind of getting shoved off on the side.
Yeah, yeah.
Had a lot of discussion on whether or not there should be a daycare or not attached to it.
Yeah.
That's starting to show a little more clarification on that.
I think people were fine with the weight room. It was just the fact of whether or not we, which we could always do something there later if we decided, but initially it didn't seem like there was a lot of support for public access to the weight room.
That's a, that's a management issue after the fact.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Uh, so you, you don't wanna bury it in the chance that down the road, we lose our one in town or whatever, and there's a different set of folks in board and, but, but, um, but for sure, that was a, you know. It's the, whether they, there's really necessity for one or not, is a bigger conversation then.
Daycare does not have a whole lot of support, who we heard wasn't it? I mean, there's a need for it, but.
Yeah.
Being, being a part of.
Oh, other school project.
Supply that has to be, so trying to solve that need. Yeah, what I heard is, it, it doesn't sound we should.
I agree.
So, Bob's gonna come back with numbers right there. Is that next, next week's numbers, that new plan?
Either, either next one or the next one. I, uh, he just sent them to me and I haven't, I haven't even looked at them yet, um, the, the plans as a result of the conversation. So, I think, I think he sent me two more. I thought there were two attachments. And he also sent them to Steve Teal at Housman, so he can start thinking. I, I can see why a, a CM is a little leery without too much information to put a number out there, because that's the number all of a sudden that folks are gonna attach to. But, uh, I trust their process, uh, on how they do it. So, even though we may have some people saying, oh, we, oh, we gotta know what, what's this gonna cost? What's this gonna cost? Again, I think it's first to know what, what, what do we feel as a need? And once those are all identified, uh, now give us a, as narrow a range as you can. So, whether that'll be, um, next Monday or, or, or two weeks, you know, I don't know. But they'll be here. Steve will be here from Housman, so, um, it'd be good for him to hear that conversation.
I think the, the competition gym gained a little traction too.
Yeah.
I think the struggle with that one's gonna be is explaining it, you know? I mean, we have, we had good explanation in the committee meeting. Now, how do you explain that in a ballot or pre-ballot?
Pre-ballot was gonna be.
Is, is, is let people have, okay, that makes sense now because of each piece.
Yeah, pre-ballot.
Versus just seeing the name, but. Cause again, what we had a practice gym, but it was, if you're gonna put a practice gym, you can do for thirty percent?
It was basically two-thirds the cost of a competition was what it was. So, he figured, and this, he was hesitant to give us a number, cause he doesn't know, but he said, say competitions three, practices two. And then the discussion one two. Okay, let's say you put a practice gym there and twenty years, twenty-five years, the pirate gym's now seventy-five years old and we decide we want a competition gym. Now, we don't have a spot for one, you know? There's no more room after you've taken up that space.
So, the plans left group for that maybe as an option and then others did not.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Where they had it on the north and south end.
South, that's gonna say it won't be centralized.
No.
Not designated within the.
And that didn't seem to make a lot of sense. When we have people coming here for events, we want them all in one area. We don't want them traipsing through the school, you know, going all over the place. We wanna keep them contained and not going to the classrooms.
Thinking of that, there was some talk of like the main entrance of the school being on the east or the west. You know, originally it was the west. Shown it to the, I think, the east side.
To the east side, yeah.
Because that's where all your parking.
Yeah, right.
Some talk about, you know, this administrator being in their building, you know, it's the centralized office.
You did something simple as, uh, Mary Dory brought up, have bathrooms over there, nothing else. Somebody, like, what a good mom, uh, perception of that, like, that's, that's just asking for trouble, have bathrooms over there next to nothing else, you know? That was a good catch.
Kitchen.
Kitchenism, that was a big discussion, I think.
Yeah.
Moving the kitchen.
We did discuss that.
And you had the idea that if we do the north construction, move the kitchen.
That kind of stemmed from my table and then we kept talking after, like, the next day and the next day. But possibly, okay, say the daycare isn't supported and we don't wanna do it. Maybe we don't add on, have construction on the north. Maybe we repurpose the lunchroom to two nice sized classrooms. You'd have room on the north side to have a window. The south side, you could have windows up high to the hallway to get natural light. There's two more classrooms. The kitchen could be converted into storage and to teach a break room. There's currently a classroom across from Mrs. Williams that's being used for storage and kind of a break room area. Well, that's another classroom we just freed up. So, now we've got two more, uh, three more classrooms over there, um, and then moving, that might justify if you don't do that construction, a lot of construction on the north. Maybe that justifies having a centrally located kitchen commons area for everyone in the middle. And we save some playground space in the same, uh, at the same time, but, and there's a lot of, a lot of good ideas.
Cause they add to that, that what they bring up is every time you open up the side of the building, the expense or turnout. So, again, you just avoid not doing anything on the whole north side, how that speeds things up.
Yeah.
And brings cost down.
Yeah.
Talked about second story a little bit too.
Yeah, over here. Yeah, over here with.
Get more natural light that way. Cost of an elevator, but maintaining was a big issue, but, uh, I guess you, what you leave with, just don't make it be a fuel breaker.
Yeah, right.
Instead of it and then see how it goes now.
No, maybe the second story construction adds a lot of expense for the classrooms. We have to see what that looks like. I guess he talked about special floors over the shop.
Depending where you put it.
Yeah, but the elevator didn't sound like there should be a major break. And an elevator doesn't have to be there if it's a fitness or a wrestling space. And he said you could argue if it was like a plain classroom, but that it gets tougher, right?
Well, it'd be the same what we have to do in a restroom.
Correct.
You have to start moving teachers in classes.
Yeah, if you have someone that can't make it up and you're not accessible. But, what did they say? Three or four hundred thousand dollars for a?
Quarter. Yeah, two hundred fifty-three.
For the elevator?
Cause it doesn't need to be overly large.
No.
It's just, they, they have to ever use it.
It's a small, no. Yeah, they said sometimes it's under lock and key and it's used if it's necessary.
So, that's, that's down on your maintenance, your wear and tear.
Cause they'll have to have an annual inspection, that'd be the big thing. I think it's by fire marshal maybe.
Couple of those. Yeah.
Yeah. So, if it makes sense, maybe it's something considered. I think the main thing you're considering there was trying to make more space for those classrooms to have natural light, right? Whether they're over there or wherever they're at.
CT space, that was a new maker space. You brought up, you, you defined what a maker space was.
CT wing.
CT, yeah. I really, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I think it's catchy too, keep all that over in one part of the school.
That would feel like rural, that rural space was so awesome and it was kind of a sh- big shared space, you know, and they had their classroom and like they could do different things. Yeah, that'd be awesome. What would seventy percent, seventy percent?
Seventy, was it seventy percent of our students going to those?
Yeah, it's on your annual report. Uh, no, uh, there's some debt on your annual report, would give some indication about whether they're going, uh, bachelor's degree bound versus associates versus workforce. But that number seemed, that, that number is trending up nationwide, particularly in rural areas.
Let's say it's well over half, right? Well over half of our students are going back in some form of a trade and our curriculum isn't currently well over half.
Mike Rowe talks a lot about, you know, the, the dirty jobs, yeah?
Yep.
And he says how that trends changing where kids are leaving high school, going straight into the workforce through trades. And a lot of this because of the C, the CT program that's in schools, get a, get their Peds started in it.
Yeah.
And then they move right into a career.
Well, that's a good, I mean, that's kind of the workforce that's coming back to find you too. Be good to offer that to those kids, they can come back to small-time harassment.
That's good. Every two weeks? The way I took it was the other kind, not necessarily hard number you're gonna give, but just then they give us that, you know, idea of a range. Okay, you guys have identified this, this is ballpark, what it's gonna cost, they're still, you know, interested. So, that'll be a pretty good, see, a little bit of cost.
Cause he was, he was gonna get a little bit more granular in terms of like, say it was the daycare. Okay, the daycare is, what, half a million dollars? No daycare, you know, that now be what it costs. He's gonna start giving us more specific.
Dietized a little bit.
Yeah. And maybe we're not quite there yet? Is that your saying?
Quite where on?
To that point?
Well.
Uh, I think it's.
I think they wait for a guaranteed maximum.
Yes, and that's even after, yeah, the, the GMP is even later than you anticipated. It might be, the GMP actually comes after your resolution.
Right.
Uh, but, so I think it'll be a slower roll into, uh, some, some harder figures than, okay, here's this plan, it will cost X. Here's a plan, it will cost Y. So, I think the, the focus of the conversation is still on scope of project, not cost of project. But we're, we're getting there pretty, you know, I think it was a big step last week, probably make a bigger step next week.
The tax payer impact would come into that, I assume, down the, you know, in a couple of meetings too, once we get a, a figure, you know, Toba's gonna have more information on the, on the, that's gonna cost on an annual basis.
Next week's meeting will be, uh, the best location is multipurpose room, should be able to facilitate, uh, what we need to accomplish. When we were in there two weeks ago, that was a, that was a little more of a sit and yet it wasn't a, 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 a small group conversation opportunity. That room will facilitate that and the share up, because next week's meeting will be very similar to what we did last week. And so, uh, we'll need to be in the multipurpose room, cause this building will be full of elementary families, uh, for, for reading night, which does, it makes, some of our people have to make some decisions, but, um.
Six P M?
Six P M, yeah. Try to go at six so we can get, um, those guys on the road.
Do you wanna add a question and answer to that?
Yes, I visited with, uh, Tim and Wyatt. I think, I think it'd be valuable to, you know, we're gonna kind of replicate what we did last week, but let's finish the night with an item on the agenda that's a Q and A with patrons. If we have patrons that are there that observe the work of the committee, which, you know, they should, that's what, that's what their role is at this point still, is to observe the work of the committee, not to participate in the committee work. Uh, cause they, they haven't been working with, they haven't been with the committee for all these many months and meetings. So, any patrons that come, cause it's an open meeting, observe the work. So any patrons that come, because it's an open meeting, observe the work of the committee, but at the end of the evening, uh, we, I, I think it's wise to have some, allow dialogue, not just public comment, but actual dialogue. I think our, our folks are getting to the point where maybe they, um, wanna be heard or maybe have some questions. Uh, and so I think it'd be viable to engage them in, in those meetings. I don't know.
Agreed.
Could be five minutes, could be twenty-five minutes, who knows, but I think, I think it's important, yeah.
I was like, he was, he was acting like we were pressed for time and maybe that's because he had to drive home, but it felt like we were actually getting somewhere.
Yeah.
So I wasn't too worried about.
He always says, I wanna keep you an hour and then it's an hour and a half and we're not even close to done.
We're getting stuff done, that doesn't matter.
Let's go, yeah.
So that's the plan going forward. All right, uh, move on to number twelve, the update on the Lincoln Avenue project.
Just a couple of minor details that, that need to be taken care of, uh, the, the fence guy was here and, uh, between myself and Gail and Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Peter, uh, and Jeremy Tarb, am I missing anybody Kyle? I mean, so we all wanted to make sure when they come down and put that fence back, that we get it right where we want, because we're, and it'll go essentially about where it was, but we're, we're gonna operate a little bit differently down there. Water's gonna operate a little different, uh, where maybe we're gonna have, because people won't be able to see as well from their cars, because they're gonna be fifteen feet back from where they were. Uh, now, so, uh, we, we really tried to eyeball that, the gates that we need, which is essentially the same, but we're gonna put in two different gates now, uh, for access to the track from outside. Uh, and then there's a couple of minor things for the construction guys to do down there, mainly at the spillways. Uh, we've got sleeves ordered for the ballards, uh, they were striping today. So it'll be, it, it, and I was talking to, uh, Gory, who was the G C down there. Uh, he said this is one of the more unique concrete projects he's ever had, primarily because of the, the, moving the water. Moving cars and moving people's pretty easy, but he had to throw moving water into that design, the engineer actually. Uh, so how, what's the best way to move those three things and, and moving water kinda had to be the priority of the three, right? So it, it is a creative, unique design, uh, that, you know, good Lord, better work when it rains. Uh, they say it will, water will move fast from there, but, but it will move the directions that it's intended to move. So, uh, obviously we had traffic there on, for the Friday football game. Uh, it, it just, it just seemed to move well, flow well, looked like kind of a street party behind us. We need more illumination, that's a city issue, uh, the streets. Right now, we're gonna plan to leave the street as an open street during games and we, we'll have several games yet, we'll evaluate in the spring whether that's the way to go, but it probably is. It's not a main thoroughfare, we wouldn't anticipate a lot of traffic, uh, it's gonna be a fifteen mile per hour zone. Uh, so if we're concerned about it, we can come up with some, some ways to keep it a through street, but also make sure if anybody's going through, it's a crawl. King Street is gonna get its gravel, they got crush rock last week, it's gonna get its gravel and then that will solidify it really pretty well, because we put the crush rock base on. So that'll be open for parking too. We're anticipating entering from the south, angling towards the north, exit out the north on Lincoln, east or west. I don't know, I, it's just, it's pretty, I think, I think most folks will probably have to admit, well, that's kind of nice to have that done. Whether they thought it was necessary or not, whether we can afford it or not.
Okay, number thirteen, the labor relations conference. An update on that from Justin or from my girl?
Yeah, it's time every other year, uh, so, so here we are, been to that conference several times, it was pretty similar to what I, which is good, when you hear, sometimes it's good to, it's, it's important enough work, you need to make sure you do it right. We don't ever really have to worry about it here and I was happy to tell Justin that on, on more than one or two occasions. You know, we just do things, I think differently and better here with regard to negotiations. It's, it's, uh, I never experienced any type of adversarial relationship between board and teachers. You know, I, I work for you, uh, and, and so I provide information, you know, to, to the board. We also provide the same information to the teachers, you know, so there's pure transparency. It always just works better than lawyers always tell you, hey, beware about this and be ready for this and be ready for this and make sure they know that. Like we just really, that's not how we have to operate here, so, uh, the anxious here, you know, Justin's assessment.
Yeah, so there were several times, I mean, you know, they, they get into the weeds and some things, cause they get some of these questions and some of these are some pretty rough stories. And you're, and you're exactly, you're sitting there like, I don't think we've ever, like, that's never even been something, so it was, it was kind of a relief, we're kinda neat to see that a little bit. Uh, to know that I felt like we were in a pretty good place. Uh, went to, was it three of them, three different?
Three breakups.
Three, four, three, three, four, three and a half sessions. Uh, so one of them was about, uh, school board and superintendent relations and, and just being on the same team, but then also, uh, superintendent evaluations was brought up. And, and one, one point that I liked that they brought up in that was when it came to evaluating your superintendent, that you don't just bottle everything up through the year and then drop it all in the evaluation, you know, like, hey, you're, hey, you're maybe not doing this real well, or you, you just don't say anything. And then you, on the evaluation, you say, hey, that was, you did a terrible job on that, where you need to have that continual conversation through the year, back and forth. Again, you're a, you're a team, um, you know, board does stuff, superintendent's, you know, but going back and forth and, and being on a cohesive team. So I thought, I thought that was really good, um, they talked about other points in that. Other one was about, uh, when I remember was communication, uh, just being really well at communication, that was timely with the bond, you know, with the bond. But one thing that stuck with me was it nine times, they said you, you gotta, you gotta almost communicate some things eight to nine times before, before it resonates with some people. You know, just continue hearing that, so it's again, having a, a school theme or, you know, or have this mission that you're doing and you just keep, you keep bringing that communication out on, this is why we're doing it, this is big, this is these things. But again, just communicating things, so I thought that was really timely far as bond and again, trying to communicate what we learned in committee meetings, you know, say like the competition gym. And figuring out how to communicate that out to the broader public on, okay, if that's what the direction we go, here's why, X, Y, Z. And they have to do that several times, you can't just do it once. And, you know, multiple platforms is, you know, and not everyone's on Facebook and it's on X, I'm gonna read the newspaper. So again, just trying to find out what, what the base, the best platform is for reaching out to everyone, so it was good, it was, it was real good. Yeah, it was pretty eye opening, just seeing here and some of these schools, well, some of the great things they've done, but then some of the things, the roads that they've ended up going down, and, and that's, that's rough.
A lot of legal leaves, but they always end with, but if you negotiate, you can do what you want. If you both agree, you can do it, do what you want, but here's the law. But if you both agree, you can do what you want, and, and, and we don't really have anything, you know, too extraordinary that, that, you know, kind of brushes up against, you know, what's, what, what the, the teachers union would say, you can't do that, or, or we, you know, or vice versa. So, uh, we're just really fortunate, so at your direction, I'll reach out to Mr. Yelp to try to establish a meeting, uh, for negotiations, to have our initial introductions. And we go so far as to, uh, either ask them, one of the side, one of the sides lobby the first request, uh, or offer. And just let's get things going. By law, you have to meet four times, we never do, because we settle well before four times. So they always say, well, by law, you are required to meet four times, what if we settle the first meeting? They're gonna, do, do we have to get together? And they're like, that's one of those things where this is what the law says, but if you both agree, you can do what you want. Essentially, so.
So we have to kick off negotiations here pretty quick.
Yeah, this month, we technically need to officially start, which just could be a recognition of one another as a bargaining unit and, uh, so I'll, uh, reach out to Mr. Yelp and then with the negotiations on the team and, uh, which is, you know, Wyatt, Justin and Melissa. And, uh, we'll have our initial, before the first of November, our first initial sit down and get things going.
Pretty good, thanks for, thanks for sharing, we'll take the time to go to that. Uh, number fourteen, we got some policy review to catch up on.
Okay, six oh five oh three is, uh, the program for high ability learners, so, um, you know, last reviewed has been, uh, three, you know, three plus years ago. There, there's, you know, nothing new in here required by statute, uh, they give a lot of local control over, over what you do. We're not required to identify a high ability learner instructor or teacher. You know, quite honestly, most schools kind of struggle with that, they, they kind of tag it on to somebody. Others are committed to it and that, they hire somebody and that's their job is to promote. Uh, it used to be called talented and gifted, T A G, talented and gifted kids, you given, you know, you know, pushing, uh, our kids who are high ability learners or talented and gifted. So, um, how we identify those kids and, uh, and what we provide, a, a majority of this is maybe found in elementary, because that's where you try to identify those kinds of kids and, uh, give them some exceptional experiences. But it, it's, I, I'd probably say every year is probably an area we, we could maybe invest time and attention and resources into, to be honest with you.
So Candy went to, like Wayne State had those additional classes in the school, is that, is that part of this or is that, is that a different?
Who, who went?
Candy, Candy, she's in a, like a Wayne State class for math or, I don't remember what it was, but it was.
I'm sorry, what?
It's a college credit class that she's in.
I'm missing, uh, Candy?
Candy.
Kennedy, sorry, sorry, I heard Candy. Love it. Uh, is she taking a dual credit at Wayne State, apparently?
She's doing, uh, personal finance.
Personal finance, okay, uh, so she, so that's a new dual credit course that's offered to all of our kids.
Okay, okay.
Uh, and so all of our sophomores are gonna earn three college credit hours.
If they pass.
If they pass the class in personal finance. Uh, so we're, we're able to do that because Mrs. Miller has the degree to make it dual credit. Uh, that's, that's your first requirement, you have a teacher with a master's degree or that Northeast or Wayne State generally, uh, will say, okay, you can be an adjunct professor for us. You can get Plinview credit, you can get Wayne State credit, so, uh, we're, but, but that is an avenue, Justin.
I didn't know if that was part of like.
It isn't.
Okay. So then does Wayne State like pay her part of her salary for that then?
Uh, she, yeah, she doesn't get anything, they, the expenses are minimal, so the kids get college credit for minimal expense. Some schools pay for their tuition, uh, because they think it's, it's that important. You know, so again, that's our first year, our kids can get dual credit, which aligns a little bit with this, quite honestly. Our kids can get dual credit in English, math, F C S and, uh, personal finance.
So I looked into this policy just a little bit and I saw, when I was reading that rule three was updated in April of twenty-four. Um, I don't know much more beyond that, I just, just note that because we reviewed this in twenty-two, so I didn't know if it required so much.
Cause there was anything in rule three that?
The law changes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'd tell you, Justin, I would have to go and look at rule four, rule three.
I didn't get into the weeds really on it, I just saw that they had updated it.
Our, our policy subscriber service, if there's change to rule three, which would change their policy, would have pushed that out to us, but it, it's, this is, this is why we do this.
That's how we keep.
Then you, you ask us to.
That service keeps us up to date.
They do.
Okay.
They do, uh, so, but, but this is why we do this, if you wanna say, hey, let's, let's make sure we are, doing our diligence as administrators to provide opportunities for kids that are high ability learners, we better kind of be aware of rule three, especially if there's been an update in the last year or so.
Do we have certain criteria we follow right now, same in elementary?
To identify, yeah, Jen can.
Yes, we take an average with their aims, plus scores and our math scores. And Bernice is our house coordinator over there, so she's the one that kind of tabulates that each testing season.
Okay, I, I've seen those come home and, um, I'm not saying my kids are way up there, but like, I've seen some before where it's, you know, it's ninety-five, ninety-nine percentile. And that's pretty good, um, it says, keep doing what you're doing, you know, on the sheet. I'm not saying we're not, I just didn't know, are we using that or was there something else we used? We are using those to kind of identify.
Yes.
Kids, okay.
Classroom performance and teacher recommendation, a teacher is gonna be your, really your best resource to recognize aptitude.
Is it basically reading and math?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I will tell you, when you talk to Bernice, she loves the program, but it is her second, it's a second part of her job duties. And so she does not have the time that she would like to give to the program. And if she had any wish, it would be just to be able to find more time or even look into hiring someone else to grow this program. We would love to do more in the middle, or in the junior high and high school with it, we just don't have that personnel to do it.
Is that something a pair or someone can help with? I mean, cause you probably don't need a full-time employee for that, do you? Or maybe I have some idea.
Yeah, we, we could, quite honestly, if you've got somebody, whether they're certificated or not, um, you know, they can, they can be the boots on the ground, so to speak, and provide those experiences for kids.
I, I don't know, it's just, she needs more help and then if we have, we don't have, she needs another person or she needs more time or?
Yeah, it's, ideally it would be another person.
Somebody who, that's their primary responsibility, so.
And there are a lot of house kids that we have in the district that because of time and personnel, we just aren't able to provide that, this program too long.
How many, how many are there that you identified, like the elementary?
Um, I'm gonna just throw out twenty, I don't know the exact number. Uh, she can, she gives each, each group, starting with third grade, about twenty minutes of her time throughout the week. One is reading, one is math, and I would say anywhere from two to six kids in each group.
So there's twenty currently?
Uh, yeah, I just.
It's a rough ballpark.
Yep.
But because of those limitations, there's most likely more kids that would fall into that category, but we're unable to serve them?
No, we would just like to be able to meet more often and be able to provide that service to our.
So all the kids that qualify in all the groups, well, not all the groups, we're just focusing elementary at this moment.
Third through sixth.
Third through sixth.
And we identify our high school kids, but, I mean, that just comes down to dual credit math, dual credit, they're in our dance courses and stuff like that. We don't do anything extra outside of that with those schools.
So limitation right now is the time that it gets spent personally.
Director.
Okay.
So we're, so we're just under the state average.
Would it, would you say to say that it would help if we had two librarians, because right now does she have to do both that building and that building?
That's where she has, she does have pair of support, you know, for her, for her media, um.
Does consolidating the media space help at all?
I think it would, yeah, it's just to make the management of it more efficient. So I think that, that, that's a relevant point to make in our, as we extend the conversation.
How, how long ago did we not have a person in there as a, when Mrs. Foster retired, I, I assume, or?
Uh, I don't know that we've ever employed.
Two.
Two, maybe going way.
Well, I was just.
We did.
Yeah, we had Mrs. Foster and we had Mrs. Brimmer, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so when Miss Brimmer went from classroom to library, that was probably the year we employed two, because Miss Foster was here for decades. Right, or her, Mrs. Peterson was here for decades. So I would guess when Miss Brimmer retired, Mrs. Foster assumed K-12's responsibility.
You got a big colorful Mac.
Okay.
We're confused.
You say that didn't?
Keyboard.
We had advocates.
All right, guys. Religious based education, let me see if I can kind of keep the conversation going there. Focus guys, you can reminisce later. Religious based exclusion from school program, you can see we approved this policy in July, this came from N E S B, so it's, it's fresh, it's brand new. Uh, okay to move on?
Yes.
Good then.
Okay, um, six oh five, part-time enrollment, so this one changes from time to time, because NSA regulations and guidelines have changed about every year for the past five years on NSA eligibility based on part-time enrollment, so that's kind of referenced right here. So, uh, let's see, well, I guess it's been two years since it was revised, so.
The last change then.
Actually, I think it's changed since then, the NSA regulations have, I don't know that the policy has, but.
The last time the N S A changed it, we made the change in year of merit, so they're up today.
What does this, what's part ten enrollment mean?
If somebody's not considered a full time student, so if they're, generally if they're a homeschool student. If they're a homeschool student and they want to take a class at their public school, they are entitled to do so. Tied to that is N S A enrollment. So their, N S A had to deal with that on, are we going to let homeschool kids participate in N S A activities? Well, they never did, never did, never did. They got pressure from the unicameral, hey, if somebody is enrolled even part time in public school, they should have some level of eligibility. So N S A hadn't come up with parameters for homeschool kids that come take music that are the star quarterback. It's, it's a tough, tricky conversation, but it, it's one that exists that we have to work with.
So they just have to enroll in an A course here?
A course.
Eligible for activities?
A course. Used to be halftime and it's gone from halftime down to A course.
Five credits a semester.
Five credits, which is. Come for music and you can wrestle, play football, play volleyball, be one act, be in speech.
This must be debatable between school districts because like in Valentine this spring, they were trying to pass a deal where they weren't going to allow homeschool kids to play football and stuff and it was not good.
Yeah, I think, I think they lose.
That's what they said, they were going to get lawyers involved in everything else.
Yeah. Yeah, they might have wanted to take the strongest stance and see if somebody backed down, but if somebody wanted to push it. That, that's not a winning argument anymore.
For the school, right?
Not a winning argument, correct.
This is the.
The parents, it's shifted to, you know, they, they pay taxes to the district. I don't care if I homeschool my kid, I want him to play football. Well, now you got to stick it in one class. Does all that sound about right, Mr. Schrempf? Okay. Okay, and finally, oh seven, your last one is six five. This, if, if we've got students that we send to Alt Ed or if they are expelled, we're still responding. If you expel a kid, there's a method, you expel them, they're gone. You're, you're still responsible for their education. You just have to provide an alternative means for their education if they are expelled for whatever reason. And this kind of lists what their options might be. And so it's a, it's a principal managed policy because they're responsible for education of students, whether they're onsite or elsewhere. We had a student at alternate education this fall and we had provide the, had to provide the resources, had to provide the curriculum, had to provide the materials. C L C is different in Norfolk, that's our level three for our high needs students. They, they're educated there, but when they're done there, they do receive a high, plenty of high school diploma because we're part of their I E P process. So Alt Ed takes on a whole lot of meetings, alternative education takes on a whole lot of options, I should say.
So no changes or anything necessary, just review.
No, thank you. Nope.
Okay, move on to action items then. Number fifteen, discuss, take possible actions, approving cooperative agreement with Osmond Community Schools for following high school activities. Football, boys and girls basketball, beginning in twenty six, twenty seven school year.
Yeah, we beat this horse enough.
We have.
I'll make a motion to approve a cooperative agreement with Osmond Community Schools for high school football, high school boys and girls basketball for the twenty six, twenty seven school year with expenses and revenues to be shared as equally as possible.
I'll say it. Okay then, we'll move to second, approve a co-op agreement with Osmond Community Schools for high school football, high school boys and girls basketball for twenty six, twenty seven, expenses, revenues to be shared as equally as possible. Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote, myself, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Number sixteen, discuss and take possible actions, approving a purchase of weight room equipment, amount of eight thousand five hundred ninety two and twelve.
Okay, so when I shared with you, this is the piece of equipment right here that we finally quit repairing in the weight room. I would guess, I, I don't know, it was decades old, right? And they're meant to last, but they're used pretty, roughly, I mean. So we had repaired the cable, the seat was, had fallen off and was repaired. I, I finally just succumbed to my principal and our, our strength and conditioning teacher, I said, throw it out. I said, Gail, get it out of here, so we've not attempted to fix it again. So a lat and low row machine is standard in high school fitness facilities. This is not a, a desire to have the next best thing, the hip sled that everybody got, the jammer that everybody got that goes away. This has been existent in school weight rooms since school weight rooms became a thing in the, in the seventies. So this piece is in that bid. This would be a new piece that would take up some of the limited space in our weight room. I asked Mr. Alexander to be here, he's our expert. So if you had any questions, I didn't tell him he had to necessarily advocate for it, but I asked him to be present. If, if you had any, any, any questions about really either of these pieces, but mainly just one, because this would be a new piece.
We have room?
He wouldn't probably ask for it if he didn't know where it would go. We, we've got, quite honestly, we've got a couple other pieces in there. We got a leg extension, a leg curl machine that need to go too. I mean, I, on any given day, I'd like to say, get them out of here so we are tempted, are not, we just did re pad it a year ago because it pads fell off and we wrapped towel around it and we used the towel for a while. We shouldn't have to operate that way or have kids use that kind of equipment, but we, we spent a couple hundred dollars and we'll get it, we'll get some more use out of it for, you know, a, a couple more years. So, you know, our, 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 our weight room is more of a weight, from my perspective, more of a, and, and my experience in school districts, it's more of a weight room than a fitness facility and that's sort of semantics, but there is a, there is a difference. What? We, we've got the right guy to grow our strength and conditioning program. We need to give him the resources and we need to give him the space to do it, to maximize what he brings to our school, to our program, for our kids. That weight room will be tight when we throw this new piece in there, but it, it can be done. That, the half racks we put in about eight years ago really was vital to maximizing the space in there. Essentially just going around the circumference of the room rather than pieces in the middle. So there's still space in the middle that you can use, but we're going to leave that up to Mr. Alexander to decide how to configure and use the space, the limited space in there.
What do you all do with this one?
So the beautiful, that, the thing with that is it's like, it's an, it's another exercise you can use for your chest. You can do triceps, you can do biceps, you can, like I have a couple of classes every week where I have twenty five to thirty, twenty five-ish kids and I'm having three to four kids in a group. Well, I can put one or two kids on the lat and this and give them another machine where then I'm narrowing it down, so I'm not having three to four kids in a group. So it just gives me another alternative to maximize the space and get everybody through the weight room and get a workout in. And on top of it, this isn't just a machine like that, this is a machine that Kelly and I talked about, that's something that she could use. And like I think everybody who wants to utilize the weight room will see a good benefit in this machine. It also hits the chest in a different, different angles, you can raise it up and down. So you're, you're targeting your chest in different positions. I also feel like there's a lot of girls that maybe just, maybe don't want to like bench. It just gives them another alternative to do a chest workout without just doing the normal bench. So there's a lot of different ways you can utilize both these machines, but.
Are those two?
Yes.
Independent cables on there?
Yes. So you can do a tricep extension on one, you can do a bicep curl on the other. You got to pull a bar, I do believe in the middle. So there's, you can get three, you can have three things roll on at one time. That is kind of like my bread and butter that I really like. I really requested Dr. Earl, the lat pull down machine. That is a necessity I do believe we really need. The cable crossover would be fantastic condition that I think we could get a lot of good use out of and, and I'm advocating for, so.
Slow sync move up and down so you can do. These right here, Mr. Alexander will go up.
So you can have different motions.
Yeah, you can do rows on them, biceps, triceps.
You can do like an ab deal on them if you want to. You can practice starting your mower, can you?
Equipment blast is obviously being used and we wore stuff out and so.
Is there some warranty on it or anything like that?
That's a good question. I, I, I don't know because they, they know that you, kids are.
They just let go of that and it comes crashing down.
I mean, they're, we've got weights in there that have been in there since Bob Leggett, well, they're donated back in the mid seventies, you know. So there are some things that just are meant to last forever. Of course, those are just hard plates, but these things, the primary thing is the cable. You know, you're going to replace the cable on it a time or two, and that's what we had done with the lat row. I mean, so it'll last decades.
I don't have a problem.
No, not at all. By all means, I mean, that's, that's not that much money for as much use as what's going to.
Yeah. And this is curriculum, right? I mean, so I know folks are saying, wait, don't do not to spend money on athletics. This is, this is, this is a resource for required curriculum.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of weight room equipment in the eight thousand five hundred ninety two dollars and twelve cents.
I'll say it.
Go ahead.
Okay, move to second to approve, purchase some new weight room equipment in the amount of eight thousand five hundred ninety two dollars and twelve cents. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote, Wyatt?
Yes.
Kayden?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carried.
Very healthy. If you have other needs, come forward, okay? The worst, the worst thing they'll do is ever say no, you know, so.
This will be a great addition, so we get this, we'll be, we got.
They'll only want a new weight room.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Well, yeah, we're working on it.
But no, these two pieces will definitely be nice.
Yep.
And, and, and we've kind of scoped it out, Coach Schmidt and I, how we can put it in there and it'll, it'll fit really good, so.
All right, move on to seventeen, discuss, consider, take all necessary action with regard to approving construction manager risk agreement with Houseman Construction for potential elementary and high school additions and renovations.
Okay, I have for you a bulleted list that Derek sent me. I said, Derek, you've got two hundred pages worth of contracts here, you know. And he's like, yeah, I know, I know you, you know, just pass it, you don't need to read it, it's a lot of legal stuff. I says, give me some information from my board. So, I mean, there's a bullet list of the highlights of those contracts for, again, I would say ninety percent is just, this is, these are the legal documents that are required in a C M contract with school district.
So one question I had with it in the A Alpha two zero one document. It references, in the language references, A two oh one, two thousand seventeen, but then they line struck it. They attached A two oh one, two thousand seven. This is the document that got attached, that we received in an attachment. My question or concern is it's very empty, it's very vague now. Because they originally said two thousand seven could be the other document, this is the references.
Okay.
So they reference, they reference two thousand seventeen, they line strike it and they, they retype in A two oh one, but they don't give a year, so. Yes, we, we have two thousand seven, but which one are they going to reference? If we have a dispute, are they going to use the two thousand seven furbage that we have in the attachment? Or are we going to receive, are we going to use two thousand seventeen, which they already struck? It'd be down multiple pages.
On the, on, on which one for sure?
On that document there.
This one?
Oh, no.
This is the oh one.
Is the, is, I don't remember the name of.
Name that, no.
Yeah, I believe it's that one there.
It says A I.
That's all I can make that feel.
I can read it, I know.
Yeah, yes.
It would be the document where they reference the two thousand, the A two oh one document.
All right.
It's better to be a lot of line, a lot of.
Okay, so I should just look for a lot of strikeouts?
Or just search for.
Derek's available for us to give him a quick call if, if you would like.
Sorry, I showed the name of the document.
Eric?
There's some strikeouts, Doug.
I get a, get a contract with strikeouts, just. Just pause and stuff too, but.
I guess the question would be, who struck it out? Did Derek strike that out? Because he's our legal representation through all this anyway. He did it, he did it for our, for our good.
Called Derek Holdridge? Eric?
No.
Maybe that's enough too, I mean, I, I, I assumed we got this directed from Houseman. I didn't know.
No, we have it there.
I didn't know it went through our.
Derek's heard you did.
Okay, so, well, then I don't think there's much more. I just thought.
So, yeah. Remember I'm talking about, remember I'm talking about not paying for a new pickup for them? Like right there on that line, the bottom automobile liability.
Yeah.
He strikes out covering vehicles owned and not owned. So I, I bet he did that.
Well, I'm not going to argue with them. If it came from us, I just assumed it came from Houseman. And then we were just.
We, we talked about before that me and Tim, Dr. Earl, and I, he, we kind of reminded ourselves that he's our, he's our legal representation.
I guess the other question I had was about the delegation of authority in the, in the motion itself.
Okay.
And it, I just wonder if it gets too much authority or power to the president and superintendent of school to make changes? To make, to make changes on their behalf? I didn't know if it need to have more board representation regarding some of those change orders. It's in the, it's in the actual motion.
Regarding, regarding change orders?
Well, you know, it could be, I mean, the change could be simply is, you know, we don't want the, I don't know, fitness room over there, we just want to, we want to stay, we don't even want to get any of your workers to take that body and for just these other walls or something. But the motion itself, I think it's a lot of, a lot of leading authority to individuals, first of all.
Okay. Hey, I've got, I've got Derek on the line.
Oh, yeah.
Do we, do we want to, Justin, do you want to, you know, ask that question?
Oh, you bet, you bet.
Okay, Derek, can you hear, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey Derek, I have a quick question. The document's referencing A two oh one, two thousand seventeen year, but we received, but then that got line struck and we have the attachment for two thousand and seven.
Two thousand seven is the version you're supposed to get. Is that two thousand seventeen in the, in the email I sent?
Well, yeah, it's in there, but you line struck it out and then just wrote A two oh one. And I didn't know by just having A two oh one written in there without the two thousand seven would make, was, was too vague a language, was my concern.
No, no, A two oh one's, yeah, it, it's fine, for the strike the year, two thousand seven, two thousand seventeen, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, because most of it's pretty standard, right? Yes, and, and what's, what's, yeah, I mean, is, is that fair to say, Derek, that it's, it's pretty standard? Legalities and insurance requirements?
Yeah, yeah, and the, there, yeah, definitely. Standard, standard language from the two oh one to the exhibit B, insurance. And, and there is an additions and additions, which are all changes that I made to it in the back of that agreement. That's what you want to look at, but, I mean, I've made a lot of changes in that agreement from the start, but my changes are, are supposed to be pro-awful school. Beneficial to you.
Okay.
At page five.
That's good.
On.
On that document.
On this one.
I was showing those, what I saw.
Okay.
But it sounds like we're, we're good to go, by the top there. That's what it said. Says contractor.
Subcontracts. Subcontracts.
Oh, that wasn't just page. I work, I'm not gonna. Yeah, don't worry about it. I'm just gonna show you. It's fine. No, it's actually good.
Are you, are you guys looking at the last page of A one thirty-three where it's identifying all the documents?
Yeah, yeah, that's, well.
A one thirty?
Right, and so.
Okay, go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, well, yeah, you're looking at, you're looking at A one thirty-three, right above the signature block where it identifies all the different documents, and that's where the A two oh one, striking the two thousand seventeen version you have is two thousand seven.
Yeah, so you were, you were, I read it two thousand, and it just says A two oh one, and I didn't know just by having A two oh one without a year reference.
Yes.
That was my concern.
Yeah, I know the year, the year, the year provision, but not having the year provision is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, if you say so, Derek.
I say so.
Always trust, always trust the lawyer, or, is that, that's not a very common saying, but. But we, we appreciate you being available for us quickly tonight.
You bet.
Thank you, we'll talk to you again soon.
Thanks, Derek.
You bet, bye. Yeah, I see what you're saying. Not having a year.
Here it is.
Prob- probably, and, and again, takes a template document and strikes irrelevancies depending on circumstances.
So what you, you had brought up earlier was that, um, about the authority of the superintendent or the president?
Yeah, it's in the motion. It's in our actual motion. It's, it's in the Word document, PPS Board, right there.
Right here? No?
No. No, it was on that, right that email. It's the Word document, right there, the blue one.
So it says such agreement or with such changes as being necessary and in the best interest of the school district and approved by the board president or superintendent of schools and further hereby delegates authority to and authorizes and directs the board president or designated to negotiate any final terms to sign, execute, deliver the agreement, any agreement amendments, change orders, or other documents. So I just didn't know if that was.
Like standard?
Well, not in the, not in the, yeah, may standard, but just, you know, we're giving two individuals.
Well, I certainly don't wanna buy that. I don't wanna make that decision.
Individual license to make changes to, so we'll have the bond, my understanding, just read, you know, read the languages. Play the bond, get our scope, get the funds, and we start working. And then we start working. I understand it's gonna be, you know, you're gonna dig into the old building, like, oh geez, we gotta do something different. Like, we can't put a wall here, we can't do that, we gotta make some changes. But, and those are reasonable, but, I mean, the changes could be, I mean, not saying it would happen, you know, could be drastic to a point of, hey, we're just gonna, I don't wanna take that money and go do something else. As long as it stills, obviously it stopped being the scope of the project. But I just didn't know by giving two individuals that much power or, or ability, I guess.
Any change orders that's gonna require additional funds beyond what's already been approved? Yeah, then.
You can't go above funds because we have a bond.
You're talking if it's, if the.
Something like, like, let's say, like, something goes to the haywire and initially we weren't gonna have a competition gym and all of a sudden.
Well, that's pretty drastic, but yeah.
But something like that.
Longest, longest stay in scope, longest stay in scope of the project, and the funds are there.
Yeah.
I just didn't know, I mean, obviously some changes, you know, if we're gonna, I don't know, good, like a good example would be the, but again, it'd be like, I was gonna put these classrooms over here, but, you know, instead of doing that, let's just not do that, but we'll take those funds and go do something more elaborate.
An extra graphics gym.
Or maybe we'll put a bunch more money into our CTE, you know? But the drawing said, I, but the drawing said one thing, and I just said, no, if some, like, certain changes, maybe a dollar amount or something, would just need a board's notice or.
Well, I wouldn't be comfortable making that decision without the support of the other.
But I mean, but that's what the motion says. The motion says it allows.
Yeah, we do have the policy we just talked about beforehand, the policy that he made.
If you read the motion, the BPS motion that.
Yeah, we're.
For the contract.
I still haven't seen that.
It's not in our pack.
It is. It's in the email he sent.
I didn't see it, so I.
Oh, okay, I, I got you.
I didn't see it.
That's just it. Yeah, it's in that document right there.
I just, you need to go down to page two?
I'm gonna go up or down, yeah.
There.
Motion, there you go, there you go. Right there.
I, I don't.
Right there.
I didn't, I didn't even.
For potential elementary.
We're not even gonna use this motion, really. I mean, we're just using this simple motion. Eric?
Okay, so that documents are relevant?
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's as of tonight. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I mean, that, we.
Right, hey, it's interesting. No, you're good. Somebody shouldn't have the authority to make. Well, I just feel certain, at a certain point, you know, you'd wanna give.
Let's just say Dr. Earl wants to have a new bathroom.
There you go, there you go. That's a much better.
Which I can understand why he would, want to have it after.
Maybe you have a more change or something more.
Sure.
Paper not used, I guess we're outside.
Yeah, but it is a good question. Maybe, maybe that needs a little pressure.
Well, what is, okay, so if that's the motion we used, then what, who does approve change orders then?
I think that, I think that conversation will be.
Later, yeah, we'll have to ask that question.
But, but, yeah.
Okay.
We're not bonded into it because of the, okay.
Yeah.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, and we probably do need to learn by that. Maybe, maybe there needs to be a dollar amount set anyway for, for something.
They just consider.
Yeah, for a T order. That's not a bad idea. I can understand that. And then the other thing I saw there is that we're gonna have to buy, well, eventually get insurance. Does that be a next discussion?
Well, yeah, not even like.
Fund insurance?
Five grand more, just like if it was five thousand dollars prior to that, now it has been like five thousand.
Yeah, in case, natural, if the weather event destroys our building.
I mean, if it's something like this.
What are the odds?
Okay. Okay, well, okay, we'll.
We'll answer that question later.
Yeah, we're good. So I'll make the motion to approve, we good for motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract documents for Hausmann, Hausmann Construction for a potential high school and elementary additions and renovations project.
I'll second it. Can you move to second to approve the contract documents for Hausmann Construction for a potential high school and elementary additions and renovations project? Especially. Not will vote. Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Chance?
Yeah.
Justin?
Yes.
Wishing carried. Hey, move on to reports. Number seventeen activities director report.
Conference cross-country was last Thursday. They have districts in Amesworth this week. Uh, conference volleyball starts Saturday. Sub-districts is on the twenty-seventh. Uh, football regular season ends Thursday and playoffs start next week. Uh, should be home for the first two rounds. Dr. Earl hit Lincoln Street's open. Practice field's getting, uh, just about done. Depending on what the weather does tomorrow, Luke should get done with it. All the sprinklers are in. So he's just gotta tie into water lines and seed it. Uh, junior high co-op this fall so far, all positive stuff that we heard. So the paperwork for girls wrestling and bowling is done and approved through the NSAA. Um, and we also applied to host girls and boys district wrestling as well as district track and district speech. So all those applications are in through the state. I put in the host of all.
Junior high kids run the state cross-country.
We had two kids run, Kara and Corver. They ran on Saturday, so.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, eighteen principals report.
The only thing that I really wanted to highlight is that I am super proud of our team for a successful parent teacher conferences. Almost every one of the appointments that we had scheduled showed up, or if they did not, or they had to reschedule, we made it happen. So essentially, we had a hundred percent across the board for our elementary classroom teachers.
Sounds good, man. Twenty, the presidents report. Um, everybody should have a copy of the superintendent's evaluation policy in their back end. So already it's that time when we, everybody's gonna take these home for the next one and compile scores on these for, uh, different areas. Kay, Justin, you guys have done this. You just kinda go through each area. Um, sometimes we've had some, some of these questions that you don't really know how to answer.
Honestly, if it's not full color copy, it's a little tough because some of these.
Some of the great ones I answer.
Yeah, can we get, can we just get a color copy?
Yeah, you'll have a digital copy here in about sixty seconds.
Fantastic. Yeah, some of these are.
There will be some.
The text, yeah, great, and so like here's a very highlighted questions, get there, be asked only to the superintendent's self-evaluation. Hopefully we're not supposed to answer some of those. I just have to fill in the blank one, copy.
So anyway, if you take these, take these home and complete this, and then we will go into closed session at the next meeting. And we'll compile all of them together, come up with a, a score, and then that will be submitted to Dr. Earl next month.
And there's always different interpretations of these questions that we'll be talking through, okay? Try and get a consistent method.
We'll just take the average.
Yep, so, okay.
So that'll be your homework for next, next ones meetings. Um, and then we had also talked about maybe changing our board meeting time as we get into winter. If you're still interested in that? Talking club's been a while. Talk about five o'clock?
It's five too early for the working people.
Wrestling. I got, I got wrestling practice. I mean, plus six, we can probably make, you wanna five? Five thirty might be a little smelly, but.
Six, eight, six is fine.
Five.
I would think six would be better for people that have a job, but if they do have a concern and wanna come, give a public comment or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Six, six point.
That's fine.
Probably go six o'clock through what month do you think?
Practice.
March meeting or? For now.
March.
Yeah, go out there. Hey, that's fine.
Start five, start. Are we starting that next month? November?
I'm gonna get, and do it, get them on the harvest, and matter.
We think it's moving.
Wait until. I think it'll be over by then, I think so. It better be fine.
Start, start next month.
Well, I'll check in with you to confirm, but we'll plan on it unless I'm told differently.
Okay, well, that leaves us to the superintendent report.
Okay, uh, EHA rates, which are healthcare, uh, rates should, I should get those in the next week or so. So a- as you're aware, the, the increase in EHA health insurance rates is rising much more rapidly than the rates of your base pay for teachers. And so it will not be long before, uh, a t- a full family health benefit will be a greater expense to the district than their salary, than a first year salary. Uh, so the, the, the state's fully aware of that. We don't know what that means, that you, you may have saw in the World Herald last week, uh, Unicamroll, uh, the one senator's pushed for a fifty thousand dollar base pay for teachers. Oh, that sounds great, but there are all kinds of issues with that. All of a sudden, somebody comes in, do we bump everybody to fifty that's currently under fifty? What about those making over fifty? Should they get an incremental increase? Huge, I mean, yeah, that sounds great, but in practicality, it's complicated. Doesn't mean you shouldn't have the conversation or talk about it. But EHA rates, uh, you know, we, we will for, almost for certain be over thirty thousand dollars for a full family policy. We pay the full premium. Not every school does. That's something that your negotiations team can consider with your teachers union, but that will be not a non-starter, I would guess for them, but at any rate, I'm, uh, digressing just a little bit of that. Um, I saw they, I saw just an article, the governor wants to share twenty million dollars, uh, with property owners. Uh, so they worried about the, the, the revenue forecast board and said, we're gonna be a hundred, several hundred million dollars short. And then for two months in a row, tax revenues were higher than anticipated. And it doesn't mean that the forecast board was necessarily wrong, but they may readjust that, which takes a little bit of the heat off of, you know, doom and loom that, that we anticipate. So, and again, that's the economic forecast board. It's not what actually happens. But they exist for a reason, because they generally kinda know what they're talking about. But, uh, everybody knows that the number one priority for Governor Phil is property tax relief, and he has heck banned to, to make a dent, to make a dent. And whether he's done that or not is, uh, to this point is debatable. Uh, I, I think it's commendable. My primary concern is funding public education. So, yeah, go for it, but show me how we can, how you're still gonna intend to fully fund public education. So, uh, so it does make us nervous for sure, because that's the way we've always done it, and it works for us, local control. Works for us, school district, local control, to determine how to pay our bills, set our programs, set our wages, pay our people, and so on. Uh, but it, it is good to see, obviously, the governor is, never far from his mind is, is real property tax reform. And that's what he ran on, and that's what he'll run on again for reelection. I share with you three new, three staff members who've spent a day away from their family, so they can go get certificated to drive our activity bus when it gets here uh, next year, hopefully in January. Uh, the audit's complete. I should have some reading material for you by next month. Uh, we hope. Uh, have to give a tremendous amount of, of commendation to Kelly. This is primarily an accounting exercise. Kelly's our accountant for the most part, and so she does a whole lot of work in the summer to prepare, and Tammy as well. Uh, so those gals, uh, really are, are, they get most of the credit. We have, when we have a successful audit, uh, you know, they, they get the credit. And she stays late because the auditors stay late. You stay here until they're done. Uh, and she takes great care of it. Uh, we had a rural ten safety visit today. Should have the report next month. Um, book fair details, I think I might have had some information in your folder about what we do with our book fair and where those funds go. Mrs. Yop does a tremendous job at that. We have two book fairs a year. Second one is during, is in the spring. We try to coordinate it with a lot of activity that we have.
Uh, but we have two book fairs, in fact, that might be what some of those are back there. Mrs. Kush is here. She's pretty awesome.
Where, I didn't know you were sitting in the background. Um, enrollment survey, couple meetings on district vacation and sick balance for your information.
Any questions?
Sounded like the book fair was good that it coordinated with an event.
Uh, with parent teacher conferences and grand.
Yeah, I vote, and it'll be the same way in the spring. It'll coordinate with the music program.
Uh, I hear that we, they wish we had a bigger space, because this place is full of books, and then we put about fifty people in here. Wish we had a bit, a bigger space, but, uh, that's.
Can we use the gym? If, if we're in the tartan for.
We set it up for a week, you need to lock.
Oh, for a week?
Yeah, it's set up for a week. You need to secure the room.
And all these boxes back here are book class books. So Monday night when we have our family reading night, every student in the elementary school will walk away with some books. Whether they got funds donated or not, every kid will get at least three books.
Letters. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to adjourn for a second?
Yep.
All favor?
All right.
Thank you, Brian.